Good evening. This special meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD is being held Thursday, April 3, 2025. The time is 6 o'clock. We have, we are called to order and we have established a quorum. If you will all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in the
Thank you. Item number three is Board of Trustees Business A. Consider Approval Proclamation for Month of the Military Child, which is April of 2025. Dr. Cruz?
Good evening. We're Vice President Nahada, members of the Board, Mr. Vasquez. We're requesting your consideration to approve the proclamation for Month of the Military Child, April 2025. The proclamation recognizes the month of April as Month of the Military Child, with April 23 being Purple Up Day, recognizing all sacrifices our military-connected parents and their children have made. We want to express our gratitude to them. We have several senior students representing our high schools. Kathryn Palmer from Montwood High School, Nalani Barera from Socorro High School, Abraham Gomez from Mission Early College High School, and Sanaya McGlory from Options High School to read our proclamation. Not, I will be reading the proclamation for them. All right.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Abraham Gomez. I am a student at Mission Early College High School. Oh, sorry. I'm quite nervous. I've been, I've been working extremely hard trying to gain an associate at Mission Early College High School, and today I will be presenting the proclamation, Month of the Military Child, and April 23, 2025, as Purple Up for Military Kids' Day. Whereas Socorro Independent School District recognized the selfless acts of service performed by its brave members of the military and their devoted families, and whereas military families continue to face that unique burden of multiple deployments, often causing, causing uncertainty and constant upending of their daily lives and routines. And whereas military families themselves know, know of the sacrifices born by military children, but their important contributions can often go unnoticed by the general public, and whereas Socorro Independent School District is home to more than 6,481 military students who have at least one parent serving in the military. And whereas military children are a source of pride and honor, and that we recognize the often unsung sacrifices made by them and commend them for their support and dedication to their families in service to the protection and advancement of citizens' rights and freedoms. And whereas the month of April has been celebrated as a month of the military child since 1986, recognizing the importance of, of military children and expressing gratitude for their sacrifice, and whereas a month-long salute to military children will encourage local communities to provide direct support to military children and families. Therefore, we, James P. Vasquez, interim Superintendent of the Socorro Independent School District and the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Month of the Military Child and the week of April 23, 2025, at SISD as Purple Up for Military Kids' Week.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Gardaia and a second by Mr. Gata. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the proclamation passes. Thank you very much.
And just a comment. You did amazing, so a big round of applause, because I know that was nerve-wracking.
Agenda item 3B, Consider Approval of Proclamation for National School Nurse Day, May 7, 2025. Ms. Tarango?
Good evening, Board President, Ms. Nahada, members of the Board, Superintendent Mr. Vasquez. I am Juliana Tarango, interim Nurse Manager for Socorro Independent School District. I'm here to consider approval for the proclamation for National School Nurse Day on Wednesday, May 7. We want to acknowledge the dedication of our Socorro ISD school nurses in meeting the needs of students by improving the effective delivery of health care in our schools. In representation, we have Avani Valenzuela, a freshman, a student at Pebble Hills High School. She's an ambassador for the Spartan Business Academy, where she represented them in regionals. Avani is an AB Honorable Student with perfect attendance. Aside from her academic accomplishments, Avani is a junior varsity cheerleader whose team won first place in all their competitions last school year. Avani is all-around Spartan Scholar and the daughter of our dedicated Socorro ISD school nurse Jessica Ojeda. With you now, Avani Valenzuela will honor us to read the proclamation for National School Nurse Day.
Proclamation, National School Nurse Day, May 7, 2025. Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school, and whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 120 years. And whereas school nurses address the school, home, and community factors that impact students' health, and whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by serving on the front lines and providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and health care providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams, school health services, 504s, IEPs, emergency planning, providing care coordination to address the school population. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to have a positive difference for children every day, therefore be it resolved, that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts to meet the needs of students by providing and advocating for quality, student-centered care, and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by supporting students to stay healthy in school, safe, and ready to learn, and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on the, on this National School Nurse Day, but in every opportunity throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're requesting the approval for the proclamation of National School Nurse Day on May 7 for Socorro Independent School District.
Motion to approve?
I second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gata and a second by Ms. Macias. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And item 3C, Consider Approval of Proclamation for School Library Month, April 2025. Ms. Sparks?
Hello. Vice President Ms. Nahada, interim Superintendent Mr. Vasquez, and members of the Board. Good evening. I'm Marcy Sparks. I'm the Library Services Coordinator for Socorro ISD, and this year marks the 40th anniversary of School Library Month. Spring is the perfect time of year to celebrate the amazing opportunities provided for our students through our library programs. National Library Week starts next week as an opportunity to celebrate all types of libraries, including school, public, medical, academic, music, law, and military, to name a few. The theme this year is drawn to your library to highlight how libraries represent their community's interests. Our SISD students and staff are drawn to our libraries because our librarians create welcoming and safe environments for all types of learning. Tonight, the 2025 winners of SISD's 10th Battle of the Blue Monets will present the proclamation through a video. These students represent Sierra Vista Steam Academy with their librarian and coach, Jenna Eva Lardeluna, and the students represented in the video are Olivia Deluna, Alexa Carrio, Daniela Para Salgado, Alexa Ibada, and Natalia Romero. Cue the video.
Proclamation, School Library Month, April 2025. Whereas school libraries provide new imagination and inspire life-oriented opportunities, students can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. And whereas school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that encourage growth and knowledge. And
Whereas school libraries provide equitable access to books, digital tools, and educational programs to ensure all users have the required needs to learn, connect. Whereas school libraries, as a core of Socorro Independent School District, need to let students do story-type, steam programs, and learn, achieve, and accomplish the best, fostering curiosity and the love of learning that lasts for the rest. And whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the school library in this school to teach good, colorful games, musical arts, and musical arts, and the brilliant of making a variety of materials. And whereas the school that it needs, well, is to provide leadership and expertise necessary to ensure the library program is an integral part of the school community that fosters both excellence and the growth in education. And And now therefore, we resolve the Board of Education does hereby proclaim April 2025 as School Library Month in all the public schools. We call upon school administrators, teachers, and students and the community of Socorro Independent School District to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month.
That was great.
At this time, the administration recommends consider, consideration and approval of the proclamation as presented.
Motion to approve?
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Macias and a second by Ms. Gardaia. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Item four, Board Honors. Mr. Escobar?
Good evening, Vice President Nakana, members of the Board, and Superintendent Ms. Vasquez. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you will please step down to receive our honorees. For our first recognition, we recognize SISD students who earned top honors in the 2025 Black History Month Art Contest sponsored by the Theta Delta Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc. Nearly 300 students from the Socorro Isleta and Clint School Districts participated in this contest, which celebrated the achievements of African-Americans in the workforce. Congratulations to our talented SISD artists and their teachers. They are, from Loma Verde Elementary, Rebecca Reyes Aguilar. Her teacher is Vivian Serano. From John Druigan School, Franda Caudillo. As well as Joey Franco. Their teacher is Laura Aragon. From Enzer Middle School, Abeline Molina. From Socorro High School, Dariana Erera, Dariana, excuse me, Erera. And her teacher is Abel Saucedo. If we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please? And just a quick note, as they're gathering for that photo, that the photos taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largor, are posted on the district website. You see the smiley face icon that is on our website. It takes you to Smugbug, and the photos are available for free high-resolution download there. Keep smiling. I take a couple more. One more, one more, right behind you, Katie. Got it. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize high school students who advanced to the State UIL Congress as well as film and cross-examination debate competitions. These students from high schools across the district did an outstanding job representing SISD at the state level. Congratulations to these remarkable scholars. From America's High School, Lilia Yáñez. Her teacher, Saul Anaya. From, from Mission Early College High School, Carlos Daniel Mora. The teacher, Edgar Álvarez. From Montwood High School, Angel Gutierrez. Instructor Xavier Felix. From Eldorado High School, Mia Luna. Instructor Jimmy Garcia. From Eastlake High School, Ethan Nguyen. Also from Eastlake, Alejandro Vario. And their instructor, Mandy Porras. If we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. Next, we honor 11 outstanding students who have been named 2025 Texas Music Educators Association All-State Musicians. This prestigious honor is awarded to students who are among the top 2% of musicians in Texas. As part of this recognition, these students had the opportunity to perform with some of the finest musicians in the state at the TMEA Convention in San Antonio. Congratulations to these talented students. From America's High School, Hurley Ireland. Instructor Eric Lerma. From Eastlake High School, Grayson Gutierrez. Also from Eastlake High School, Areya Labrado. Instructor, Director, Liliana Labrado. From Eldorado High School, Zacharia Carrasco. As well from Eldorado, Ian Sunderman. The director is Cesar Inojos. From Mission Early College, Maximiliano Rivas. From Montwood High School, Joaquin Porras. Director, Nabil Gonzalez. From Pebble Hills High School, Connor Baxter. Also from Pebble Hills High School, Nathan Hernandez Cruz. Director, Maximo Sierra. And also from Pebble Hills High School, Rosaline Lares. Joined by Director, Genevieve Tejeda. Also here from Pebble Hills High School is Andres Avila. Students, directors, if we can have you back to the front, please, for a photo? Congratulations once again. Our next recognition honors a talented clarinet choir that was selected to perform at the 2025 Texas Music Educators Association Convention, also in San Antonio. This exceptional group of musicians was chosen from a select few to showcase their achievements at the prestigious annual conference. Congratulations to the Socorro High School Clarinet Choir. Alyssa Bernal. Jaziel Cabriales. Jorge Cabriales. Charlotte Cooper. Eileen Flores. James Flores. David Garcia. Genesis Garcia. Andrea Guardián. Isabella Hernandez. Adriel Oaxaca. Isabella Palet. Kayla Person. Alexia Rivera Rodríguez. Annabelle Romero. Victoria Velázquez. Jaylene Villalobos. Ruby Hernandez. Raúl Olivas. Assistant Directors are Vincent Chaparro. Rebecca Mondreal. And they're led by Director Mark Mumau. Congratulations once again. Next, we honor SISD student-athletes who qualified for and participated in the 2025 UIL 6A Wrestling State Meet. These talented wrestlers have done an outstanding job representing Team SISD and the entire El Paso region, demonstrating their incredible talent and dedication. Congratulations to these amazing student-athletes for their remarkable achievements. From Montwood High School, Kayla Mata. Her coach is Oscar Nómez. From Pebble Hills High School, Dorian Jaramillo. Aiden Quinones. DeAngelo Zuniga. And their head coach is Carlos Panijagua. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please. Congratulations once again. Next, we'll continue with recognition of four Team SISD championship basketball teams. First, we have SISD, an SISD girls' basketball team, being recognized for their outstanding achievement in winning the 1-5A district and a 5A-by-district championship. This talented team finished district play undefeated with an impressive record of 12-0 and an overall record of 28-4. Individual achievements include two players being named 2-5A Most Valuable Players and several players earned First and Second Team All-District and All-Academic Honors. Congratulations to the America's High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team. Jada Carejo. Isabella Carrio. Jimena Garcia. Jaden Herrera. Isabella Madrid. Candace Marine. Kylie Marcus. Kalen Medrano. Assistant coaches Elizabeth Bolden. And Aaron Espinoza. Congratulations once again. We continue with another SISD girls' basketball team who won the 1-6A district and a 6A-by-district championship. The team finished a remarkable season with an overall record of 25-8. Team members have earned several titles, including District Most Valuable Player, along with First Team All-District and Second Team All-District honors. Additionally, the team's head coach was recognized as Coach of the Year. Congratulations to the Pebble Hills High School Girls Basketball Team. Ani, excuse me, Anisamara Princess Castañeda. Cameron Clark. Sole Flores. Aubrey Isabella Franco. Serenity Irma Garcia. Sofia Olgin. Sofia Victoria Martinez. Genevi Jo Montero. Paula Anay Para. Naveya Aronaya Paul. Jordan Sapien. Olivia Grace White. Elizabeth Duran. And head coach, Coach of the Year, Stephen Lee. Congratulations once again. We continue with recognition of an SISD boys' basketball team for their outstanding achievement in winning, winning the 1-5A district championship. The team finished district play undefeated, boasting an impressive record of 12-0 and an overall record of 21-11, excuse me. Congratulations to the America's High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team. Christian Baca. Brady Duggan. Kobe Helply. Andre Hernandez. Elian Herrera. Matt Magdaleno. Amiel Morales. Josh Picardo. Josh Robinson. Ethan Salinas. Assistant coach Bobby Morales. And they're led by head coach Mike Brooks. Congratulations once again. We continue with recognition of another SISD boys' basketball team for winning a 6A-by-district championship. This talented team finished the season with an impressive overall record of 24-9 and a district record of 8-4. Several players received individual honors, including First and Second Team All-District and All-District Academic Honors. Congratulations to the Eastlake Boys Basketball Team. Tristan Anderson Edman. Manuel Jacob Delgado. Jaden DeVries. Diego Diaz Ortiz. Caleb Gutierrez. Jeremiah Jones. Maxime Lares. Keshan LeBlanc. Derek Mendez Enriquez. Brayden Keith Quigley. Jonathan Raymond. Luis Solis. And head coach Matthew Taylor. For our final recognitions, we will honor Team SISD mariachi ensembles from all SISD high schools for qualifying for the 2025 UIL State Mariachi Festival. These exceptional musicians competed against the top mariachi groups in the state, and SISD is the only district in the city that had all of its high schools advancing to the state competition. Absolutely. Congratulations to all of our talented mariachi ensembles. We begin with America's High Schools Mariachi Los Pioneros. Lynette Aguirre. Gabriel Alonso. Diego Barón. Valerie Burgos Campos. Zoe Cuéllar. Daphne García Rivera. Santiago Hermosillo. Jason Hakes. Arturo Levario. Camille Levario. Caitlin Martínez. Jared Murillo. Leonava. Emiliano Prieto Aguilar. Valeria Ramos Catalán. Yannone Romero. Yasmin Salcedo. Zoe Siqueiros. Aiden V. Nicolas Villa. And their director is José Luis Rios. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Congratulations once again. We continue with Eastlake High School's Mariachi Falco. Abigail Anguiano. Maggie Beltran. Pablo Chávez. Dante Pierro. Emily Guerrero. Isabella Hebler. Christian Jaramillo. Sofia Naieli Melendez. Jaylene Mercado. Pablo Rodríguez. Ava Salcedo. Co-directors Cindy Cavada. Liliana Labrado. Daniel Rivera. And director Steve Hernandez. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize El Dorado High School's Mariachi Azteca. Madison García. Megan García. Gabriel Hernández. Jordan León. Ariel Salazal Del Valle. Ian Sunderman. Leonel Tapia. And their director, Claudia Rascón. And their director Claudia Rascón. Congratulations once again. Next, we have Montwood High Schools Mariachi Sangre Mexicana. Emilio Chávez. Areli Cordoba. Alex Delgado. Mario Gurola. Gabriela Hernández Mendoza. Alberto Moncada Ivara. Sylvia Valles. Victoria Vázquez. And their directors Valeria Castañeda. Left. Congratulations once again. We continue with recognition for Socorro High Schools Mariachi Los Gaviñanes. Sofia Aguilar. Gianna Almada. Isaiah Álvarez. Edgar Cordero. Sebastián Coral. Gracia De Senna. Ivy Delgado. Rizelda Espin. Genesis García. Annabel Irigoyan. Leah Nanthavong. Elian Rocha. Luis Sánchez. Paola Treviso. And directors José Parada. And Roger Rosales. Congratulations once again. And for our final recognition this evening, we have the group who gave us an amazing performance earlier to kick off our event tonight, the Pebble Hills High School Mariachi Los Guerrero's. This group received the highest Division One Superior rating at the state competition. They are Manuel Arredondo. Natsumi Cervera. Omar Chavaria. Avani Edwards Cooksey. Isaiah Flores. Nathan Hernández Cruz. Brian Hill. Austin Littles. Ruby Mesa. Maya Murga. Nicholas Myers. Luisa Noriega. Samantha Ortiz Ponse. Cristian Osorio. José Pedroza. Daniela Soto. Gael Soto. Chantal Stefani. Diego Torres. Fernando Valenzuela Frias. Jill Dean Vázquez. Directors Eduardo García. And Daniel Reyes. Congratulations once again on an amazing year. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening, thank you.
If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned, the time is 6:57. Thank you.